Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Paul Hyman. I'm the Executive Director here at the Pride Center at Equality Park. And I would very much like to thank members of our community for attending this event this evening. This is an extraordinary opportunity for us here at the center to realize our mission. We provide a welcoming, safe, nurturing, inclusive home that serves and empowers the LGBTQ communities and our friends and neighbors in South Florida. I can't think of any better example of how we can put that into action and to host this important event here this evening. I would like to thank the volunteers and staff who rose to the occasion and got things set up in here this evening. I would also like to thank so many members of our Board of Directors for being here tonight. Please raise your hands so you can be recognized. Thank you very, very much. And finally, I'm honored to now introduce and turn this over to Wolfmanors Mayor Gary Resnick. First, it's my privilege and honor to introduce a good friend and somebody I've known for a long time and who I want to be when I grow up. Actually, I met Debbie when she was state representative before I was involved in elected office. And so I worked with her and watched as she became a state senator and then, of course, a member of Congress. She does represent -- she is my congresswoman and, of course, she represents a large portion of Wolfmanors. And we're thrilled to have her as our congresswoman. She's been incredibly wonderful to work with on behalf of not only our state but cities throughout the entire country and now as the DNC Chair. I cannot be more than glad. I cannot be more than glad the last time a DNC Chair appeared in Wolfmanors. But we're the focus. We're the center. So without any further ado, let me introduce Debbie Watson Mitchell.
Mayor Resnick, Gary, I'm here in Wolfmanors because this is the center of the universe. And I am so thrilled to be able to be here. You guys know how to plan a party at the last minute. First of all, this center has made -- I mean, really, congratulations on the new digs, relatively new digs. Quite a difference from the GLCC. You know, we obviously took great pride in the existence of the GLCC in general, but this is really a tremendous accomplishment. And the board, Paul and the whole board should really be proud of yourselves. No pun intended. The Pride Center at Equality Park is here and serves as a gathering place and as a support system for our community. And really, it's so good to be here with you. I really just burst with pride every time I'm in Washington and talk about our community, talk about the fact that I represent one of the largest gay communities in the country and what a great source of pride that is for me and how wonderful it is to be able to stand up and fight for you on behalf of the issues that matter to us and our community every single day. I proudly serve as a founding Vice Chair of the LGBT Caucus in the House of Representatives. And I'm going to need to really be fully immersed in the issues that matter to the LGBT community. Our four chairs of the LGBT Caucus are Barney Frank, Tommy Baldwin, Jared Polis, and David Siskel Lee, who are the four openly gay members of Congress. And so the numbers are growing. We added David this year, a former mayor of Providence and former member of the Executive Committee of the DNC, head of the -- was the chair of municipal officials for the Democratic Party. So he's a great guy. I really enjoyed working with him since he joined Congress. But what you do here strengthens our community in so many ways. And I am really proud to be a partner in the fight. I'm obviously really pleased to be able to be here and I want to hear what's on your mind. I'm going to speak for literally about five minutes and then I just want to hear from you and take the opportunity to just answer your questions or just hear what's on your mind. But I'm really excited to be able to be here and sort of celebrate and tout what we've been able to accomplish. I think it's absolutely incredible. I remember when I was a little girl and how foreign the gay community was to the average person, you know, walking around in our society. And really, and I don't mean to offend when I say foreign, but I mean, if you remember, I remember things when I was a little girl, things like seeing a biracial couple walking down the street hand in hand or in this being online in the store. And remember people staring at biracial couples like it was so unusual and like it was so wrong even. And look how far we've come in terms of acceptance and that being the most natural thing in the world now. And people don't even notice, for the most part, and it's so much so that our President of the United States of America is biracial. And that's just a remarkable, remarkable accomplishment, remarkable progress and an example of how tolerance in America truly can evolve. And I remember really at the same point, people looking and whispering about gay couples, about, you know, partners, gay partners who would walk down the street. And that was rare. I mean, it was rare when I was smaller. As I've grown up, it's become, you know, not rare at all. It's become commonplace and run-of-the-mill. And I think that's a tremendous credit, not just to the policy changes that we've been able to make, but it's a credit to the community. Because the community here and across the country has matured so much and been able to spend so much time organizing and reaching out and educating the rest of the country that we're all the same. You know, we might approach life differently, but we are all the same. And so we've gained so much more acceptance. And it's so much so that my children and my children's friends, and I have 11-year-old twins and a seven-year-old, realize that, you know, being gay is just another way of life. They're just like the way of life that they're living, that their parents are living. And I'll just share with you, my son, who I probably said this when he was about nine, we were sitting in our family room watching TV and, you know, one of the court decisions in one of the states had been handed down that allowed, you know, it overturned ridiculous state laws that prohibited gay marriage. And there was just, you know, some idiot shouting on the TV about how wrong it was or whatever they were saying. And my son turns to me, literally nine years old, and I think he might have been in fourth grade, and said, "Mom, who really cares? Who really cares?" They want to get that. I tell you that story not to show what a good character I am or, you know, who my children are, although they are and I am. I tell you to show you that I think gay marriage in particular, but gay rights in general, is the civil rights issue of our time. And we are so fortunate to have such a steadfast ally for the issues in the LGBT community that matter the most in the White House. I mean, that's just been huge. And, you know, although I know that you've been frustrated at times, I know that the pace of change maybe hasn't come fast enough. I have had many a conversation with so many of you about, you know, "Come on, let's go. What's going on here? What are you going to do something?" Well, he may have been a little bit of a late bloomer, but we certainly have a lot to be proud of. I mean, between the hate crimes legislation, between the repeal of Don't Ask, Don't Tell, between, you know, the decision on the part of the Obama administration through the Attorney General Eric Holder not to appeal the overturning of the Defense of Marriage Act and to halt deportations when it comes to, you know, foreign, gay partners who have foreign nationals as partners. That's tremendous progress. It really is. Thank you so much, David, and that there is so much more that needs to be accomplished. But if you had told me at the start of my congressional career that we would make this much progress in six short years, really four years if you only counted from, well, two years, excuse me, if you only counted from President Obama's time in office, after two years that we were in the majority in the House of Representatives and were able to move hate crimes, then it's just incredibly exciting. Now, you know, we still have an end-up hanging out there and we need to make sure that we continue to press for a completely inclusive end-up. There's no question about that. There is a to-do list that still exists and some of the things on the to-do list are left undone. But let me kind of go through some of the things that I've been supportive of in addition to the things that I've been talking about. You know, we have the Student Non-Discrimination Act, a resolution supporting the National Day of Silence, and the United American Families Act, all of which are those that I'm a co-sponsor of. And so we have those fights still in front of us. And we have to focus on anti-bullying measures and really aggressively making sure that we educate young people about the importance of tolerance and that bullying is unacceptable behavior and that the impact of bullying can be so significant. The It Gets Better campaign, incredibly important, you know, one that I not only fully embrace but have asked to be a part of. It really is so important that we show young people who are struggling with their sexuality, who are just, you know, trying to deal with all the challenges that just being a young person is. I mean, you know, like I said, I have two pre-teens, both 11. And, you know, just the social challenges that they have to deal with every single day and, you know, so far, as far as it seems, they are probably heterosexual, but who knows? But in general, no, really, I mean, who knows? I certainly hope they haven't started thinking too much about that yet. But, you know, death times is rich man high. That's why it's important to be a good parent. Just dealing with the normal issues of sexuality and social decision-making that kids have to deal with and then add on top of that uncertainty about your sexuality and then add on top of that bullying over it, I mean, it could be, it could so easily, you can so easily see how that could become too much to bear for one kid. I mean, life in general at that age can seem too much to bear, no matter what challenges you're dealing with. So it's just so important that we really make a commitment. And I know the LGBT community leadership has made a commitment to reach out to young people and really try to be there. Just remember the things that you went through, you know, as you were coming of age and what you wish was there for you in the way of resources. And I know on the policy end, I am going to continue to fight hard to make sure that government programs are there, that government encourages, that in our public schools, we provide the backup and the safety net for these kids who are struggling so that we don't have any more headlines that show that a young person who was struggling with their sexuality, or even though they weren't struggling with their sexuality but seemed like they were, was a victim of bullying and couldn't take it anymore and took their own life. We just can't allow that to happen anymore. We can't. So I'm going to thank you. I'd be glad to take any questions you have. Mayor Resnick, City Wolfmanors does an absolutely fabulous job. My good friend Tom Green on the town council, who used to be on my side of town but is now on the east side, is doing a great job for you here. And everyone here that I've been friends with for so long. Michael Albeda from the House. So good to see you. Former Dolphin Democratic president, Triangle Caucus, just wonderful, TWT, the whole deal. Very long resume. Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
I'd like to know when the Democrats are going to take charge of the conversation. It seems that it's all, you hear on the TV, the Republicans are very good at yelling and talking over everybody.
How do you think they'll take charge of it? In what way do you think they have it?
They seem to be taking charge of the conversation in Congress, what's important.
You mean in general?
In general. And the Democrats are always on the defensive and mild. The Democrats are too reasonable, you know, they think it's reasonable to do this, have bipartisanship. They don't want bipartisanship at all. Why don't we take charge and say, "To hell with them"?
I'm going to have an opportunity to have a little bit bigger megaphone than I have before in the next couple of weeks.
Last night on Rachel Maddow, you were.
Thank you. So I assure you, particularly in the last few months since the Republicans took over the House of Representatives, that our messaging has gotten quite strong, you know, much stronger. And we've been, I think, able to demonstrate the dramatic contrast between the direction that the Republicans want to take this country by essentially ending Medicare as we know it, pulling the safety net, you know, ending Medicaid as we know and pulling the safety net out from under our seniors and the most vulnerable, splashing and burning, the budget burn approach to budget cutting without regard for the well-being of Americans.
When we had the healthcare thing, Sarah Kamm came with the death panel thing and that hit the news right away.
Right.
Here they have these things that are really death panels, which they want to do to Medicare, and it's like whispering about it.
I don't know. Some of these might have noticed.
I mean, when she came out with death panels.
I wasn't whispering. When I talked about the impact on seniors of all my proposal, I would call it a death trap for seniors and, you know, happy wolf.
The death panel thing went over.
I have been, and I can assure you, I agree with you, and I think we need to make sure that we are coordinating our message effectively, that we're working with the White House on doing that. The person that has the biggest megaphone, obviously, is the President, and I thought he used it pretty darn well last Wednesday. I mean, the speech that he made to the country was. Okay, yes.
I have a two-part question. My partner and I have been in Florida 25 years, and I think the most disillusioning part of living here is the way the Republicans dominate the state. Anything from talking. I feel like I must remind you both that on the toilet. Now, two questions. One, what can we do to turn that around in the state of Florida? And two, as Tweedle Dum and Tweedledumber fight their way in the Republican Party and trip and go themselves to get to the White House, I see that Jeff Bush is going to come out of Whitmer. All the naysayers are saying no, but look who the, look who the characters are.
You mean in 2016?
No, I'm talking about 2012. I'm sorry. Jeff Bush.
Yeah, I knew you.
About Donald Trump being the forefront currently, 19%.
I don't see Jeff Bush running in 2012. I mean, 2015, I could see. And he said that he won't rule out running in 2016.
Well, someone very magical better come in the Republican Party. Not that I don't want them to, but, I mean, real.
I hope the field stays, remains just as it is. But we can't take it for granted. I agree with you, we can't take it for granted. But you asked me, what is it that we can do to turn the state around and to make sure that we can elect more Democrats? We took step one in November, when in spite of dramatic losses for Democrats, the number five and six of Florida's constitution. It's hugely important in terms of getting the districts that we have the most gerrymandered map in the country. I mean, literally.
They're trying to get a ramped it, though.
Well, sure they will, but that's what courts are for. And I'm sure that the eventual map that the legislature passes will end up in court. And of course, that's why Rick Scott and his cronies in Tallahassee are trying to actually dismantle our Supreme Court and change it so that they can get a court packed with who they want so that they'll uphold the map that the legislature draws. So we have to be watchful and we have to make sure that we're vigilant. But so five and six will give us an opportunity to have actual fair districts drawn and give us a more fighting chance of balancing things out in the legislature and in the congressional delegation. But it is up to us to turn out. I mean, every one of you, every one of us knows people, has friends and neighbors who sat on their hands and stayed home in November of 2010. I mean, this community didn't come near to the turnout for the largest Democratic county in the state and one of the largest Democratic counties in the country in terms of the turnout that we should have provided. I mean, you know, look at the losses that we had right here in our own backyard that never should have occurred if Democrats turned out the way they looked, the way they should have. So that's on us. That's on us. We have to organize better, we have to mobilize better, and we have to not take things for granted. So thank you very much. Yes.
Yesterday, the Chinese credit agency downgraded the American credit rate, followed by S and P. I see this as a potential form of economic work, but I really believe in my heart that this is going to forbid the Republicans agenda for the budget within any plan that is not for us to work. We're at threshold of losing our AAA credit rate. How is this going to be counterbalanced by the Democratic Party in the coming year?
Well, it's a good question. It's certainly, I wasn't aware of the credit-making information you cited, but the last thing that we should be doing is playing chicken with the debt ceiling. That's certainly going to do nothing except harm our economy and throw us into defaulting on our nation's debt. It would be economic Armageddon, and every major economist out there says that. Yet the Republicans continue to threaten to not vote to raise the debt ceiling unless we cut even more dramatically, agree to cut even more dramatic cuts. I mean, Eric Cantor said today, literally as late as yesterday, that the Republican Caucus would not vote for the debt ceiling to be raised unless we agreed to more cuts. That is just outrageously irresponsible. You know, and I think they are a little bit of a loggerhead because Speaker Boehner has said that they would vote to raise the debt ceiling. So, you know, they've got 87 Tea Party freshmen in their caucus that they are having to deal with. And so we absolutely have to make sure that we don't further erode our economic credibility in the world and starting with making sure that even though we don't like the fact that we haven't raised the debt ceiling that we did. Yes, sir, at the back in the white shirt.
Yes. Unfortunately, in the state of Florida, our elected officials in the Department of Health are getting ready to do a series of meetings changing Ryan White eligibility from 400% of poverty level to 200% of poverty level, which will effectively disenroll 5,900 Floridians with HIV and AIDS from Ryan White care and eligibility. Now, Senator Burr from North Carolina had authored a bill to get more money for Ryan White from the national funding, and the bill ended up just dying in a committee. What can we do on a state and a national level to get more money for Ryan White funding so that we don't have the needless deaths of Floridians with HIV and AIDS when we have life-saving medications to keep them alive?
Well, the short answer is put Democrats back in the majority in the House of Representatives. He's been in the House for eight years and was one of the people that annually championed increasing Ryan White funding, particularly Title IV. And obviously, I continue to do that today even though I'm not on appropriations currently. But, you know, that is classic Republican hide the ball. I mean, they did the same thing with Kid Care. When they were getting too much criticism and didn't want to deal with actually funding the waitlist for Kid Care, they simply eliminated the waitlist and pretended it didn't exist. And so all those kids, in their mind, disappeared. Well, they're disappearing people on the AID list by changing the eligibility, and it's absolutely unconscionable. You know, I'm not being glib here, I really can tell you that the only way that I can see us really being able to get a committed effort to add funding for AID on a consistent basis but that isn't a hand-to-mouth program is to change the political makeup of the Congress. Yes, ma'am?
Just a little bit of, maybe a ray of hope. Today, there was a poll among the Tea Partyers that they, 70% of them are against this new budget that the Republicans.
It doesn't go.
Because of Medicare.
Yeah.
They don't want Medicare cut.
They don't want Medicare cut?
They don't want Medicare cut. And so they are, they're starting to organize. I just thought I'd let you know because it's going to cause a little bit of, you know, a little bit of stuff with.
Well, the poll that I saw, 78% of Americans do not want us to cut the budget using Medicare.
Well, we did a Tea Party poll specifically today. Today it was on the news.
Even that.
So they're 70% against anything, you know, any cuts with Medicare.
It's because it's absolutely wrong to cut Medicare.
It's wrong. Why can't we, if Democrats, get the point across that cutting taxes is hurting the debt, it's such a great part of this deficit? Why do we allow the Republicans to constantly push their agenda of cutting spending, cutting spending, and not, why can't we get our message of raising taxes across?
Well, our message isn't raising taxes. I mean, that's certainly not the message or the agenda of the Democratic Party is that we should raise taxes. President Obama, though, he talked last.
I'm talking about the Bush tax cuts.
Let me ask you a question. President Obama did talk last Wednesday about the importance of shared sacrifices, about the importance of striking a balance between smart cuts and sound investments and literally pushed back so hard on Republicans that they whined, that they were invited to listen to his speech. And then he criticized them and apparently their skin is incredibly thin. Wanted to give them a blankie and, I guess that's what they should have started the meeting with before we had started speaking. But I think the President pushed back as hard as he could last week, presented the, I mean, I don't want to go dark and forth because I want to get as many questions as I can, but presented as stark a contrast between the direction the Democrats would go and the directions that Republicans would go. I mean, he proposed $4 trillion in cuts while at the same time advocating that we cannot drop the tax rate on the wealthiest Americans to 25% and give 33 people on Medicare each a $6,400 increase in their healthcare bill and do that in the name of adding $200,000 in tax breaks to the wealthy. Then we're going to have to strike a balance and then we're going to have to accept painful cuts that none of us would like to have to cut, but if we're going to get a handle on our deficit, we're going to need to absorb those. But so too are the wealthy going to need to realize that they can't continue to get tax breaks that don't do anything to improve the economy.
But we as Democrats want.
No, really, I really have to, I got to move on. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
First of all, I want to applaud you for putting that. It's an important thing to help to continue to bring the torch back.
Absolutely.
I have a comment because I recently have been going through treatment therapy with the COVID season. And I would like to know what the Democratic Party is going to do to prevent gouging by the healthcare industry and pharmaceutical industry. I mean, I had my one infusion for chemotherapy for $14,000.
And do you have insurance?
I have Medicare. You know, so the taxpayers are paying this outrageous, you know, amount of money. I don't know whether a public option is the answer or what, but it seems like.
Well, no, the answer is the Affordable Care Act, which is law and became law when President Obama signed it last March. I mean, it will, over the next couple of years, really make sure that everyone, A, has insurance, has insurance coverage. Bringing that many people into the system is going to break down costs, you know, just through that reform. But preventing insurance companies from dropping you or denying you coverage based on previous condition, making sure that we can make prescription drugs more. on previous condition, making sure that we can make prescription drugs more affordable, making sure that small business owners are able to get tax credits to provide insurance to their employees where they can't now, giving subsidies to individuals who are not able to afford insurance on their own so that they can afford it and not go uninsured. So the Affordable Care Act is really the key to addressing the concern that you're facing.
It seems like a conflict of interest because you have the health profession, which is basically benefiting and profiting from keeping people sick. And, you know, I don't know.
I think that's the current system, and that's why we passed the Affordable Care Act so that we can focus on prevention and wellness instead of the sick care system that the current system promotes now. So I agree with you, but it was so important that we make sure that it's a patient's bill of rights, which became law last year as part of the Affordable Care Act, that we ensure that people are entitled to wellness and prevention, preventative screenings like mammograms and colonoscopies so that we can catch these things sooner.
There also has to be a way to keep these physicians and hospitals and pharmaceutical companies from discharging outlandish diseases.
Well, that's all a part of the Affordable Care Act. So you're right, and we addressed it, and that's why we, that's why I'm going to continue to fight very, very hard to prevent the Republicans from repealing it, which was their first act. That was their first act, and not to our creation, not turning the economy around. We've been through about seventeen weeks of their majority. Not a single bill has come to the floor to do either of those things. So, yes.
First of all, my name is Scott Hall, and I'm glad to see you again.
Thanks.
I want to personally thank you for coming to our event that we held for the candlelight vigil for Sunny Williams.
Oh, you're welcome.
And you were amazing, as always. I also want to bring your attention, to everyone's attention, that because of your office and all your hard work with Obama, with the hate crime legislation, that we've had a brutal attack in South Carolina where they do not have statewide hate crime protection. And because of the office and us doing, getting our message out, we were able to get the FBI to do an investigation, and now they are looking into it, into hate crime and calling it a hate crime and possibly going to be prosecuted as the first hate crime under the new legislation because of you. And it wouldn't have been possible if it wasn't for the work you're doing. So thank you. What can we do to help you become more successful in getting more candidates, Democratic candidates, elected next year?
Vote. Vote. Get out there.
This is really an official event, so I know we're, but we're sort of on the borderline here. How about I share that with you after, oh, I mean, just because I want to not completely bleed between official and unofficial. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, thank you. I have a nonprofit that deals with anti-bullying issues. It's so funny that I go over after Scott because we work a lot together, right here in Wilton Manners. And although we have Julie Carson, who has implemented these anti-bullying things in Wilton Manners and the schools that are, yet we have all these laws in place, but I still get phone calls from students and from teachers who sort of don't want to be the whistleblower of the schools of things that are happening to our students. And I know you have, you know, your eleven-year-old children there, so I know that this must be an issue that is close to your heart. But we have these laws in place, but when are we going to start holding the teachers, the schools, and everyone accountable for what happens? Because although I love to work with Scott, I'm tired of all these candlelight visuals of these kids dying, and not just the LGBT community, but, you know, the community at large. You know, I happen to be gay, but I don't care about this just because I'm gay. You know, I care about this because kids are dying. And I hear them saying, there are laws and there are these rules in place, but I'm still getting picked on by my teachers, and I'm still getting called names, and I'm still getting, you know, discriminated against because of who I am.
Were you in here during the remarks? Were you in the room?
I was here a little bit earlier. I heard that. But I want to hear, what are we doing to hold the teachers and the school system specifically accountable? Maybe I didn't hear that. I know the laws, but what are we, going to do something to them?
Well, I wish we had laws in place.
What are we going to like?
And policies in place.
Right.
And advocates like Ron Barlow in on the school board, who just really is so committed to making sure that she continues to raise bullying as an issue from the day I set the school board. But I, like I said, I think it's imperative that not just in the LGBT community, but in the community at large, that we get involved in campaigns and outreach like the It Gets Better campaign so that we can find those kids and reach them somehow with whoever appeals to them, whether it's an actress or a politician or, you know, just a local mom or whoever it is. I don't, but we need the accountability, and I think that there are mechanisms in place to hold people accountable. I don't know that they always are employed the way they should be.
Right.
You know, just the mechanisms are there, but those are only as good as these forces. And if there isn't the follow-through on, you know, punishment and making an example, I mean, look, the last thing that most kids want to be at that stage of their lives is an example.
Right.
You know, they want the furthest thing from that.
Right.
So I think we need, I think all of us, whether the leadership in the LGBT community or anyone who cares about bullying in general, you know, you don't have to be gay to be a victim of bullying, I think we need to make sure that we continue to push the school board, that we continue to push the leadership of individual schools, that you've got to follow through, and you've got to use the mechanisms that have been put in place and use the enforcement that is there and not be afraid of it. Because, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, I think some of the resistance is just the natural fear that most people have that has beaten into our heads from the time we are the smallest about tattling. You know, I mean, the anti-tattling, the anti-rattling out, you know, school pigeon.
Snitches get stitches is what I hear from the kids, you know?
Exactly. Whether you're a kid or a teacher or a principal, you know, that's so ingrained in us socially that that's a huge problem. So I think we need to work on making that a moral imperative.
I think that's a good thing.
My partner and I, could you guide your assistant to report any additional flyer that I need? I'm working with Immigration Equality tomorrow at the New --
So am I.
At the New Moon Bar here in Wilton Manners at 7:30 PM tomorrow night, we're having a meet and greet with representatives for immigration equality. The reason this is so painful for me is because I used to live in France. I had lived there for five years. I had to leave there because I was not legal there. It was the most devastating time of my life, and I never thought I would get away. I came back here, went on about my life, and I met someone here. I didn't sub Florida. I came here from New York. This state is full of people that come from all over the world, from every walk of life. You never know who you're going to meet. You never know who you're going to fall in love with. There's no guarantees. And when you meet this person and you have to figure out day by day how are you going to keep here, how are you going to be legal? It's almost like we're living in some kind of like, some kind of ultra universe, like some ultra state of like, I don't know, like the Underground Railroad during the, you know, during the slavery movement. We have our partners, and we have to hide them because they're afraid. My partner is not here with me. He's legal now, but he's not here with me because he's afraid. He's afraid.
Is he legal now?
People are here, they're trying to park my car. And I'm also, he's a friend of mine who has a self deportation.
I've been, I'm an immigrant into this country, and I came here on a student visa in 1989 and went to Rhode Island School to sign graduate in '93. I've been on different work visas till now. I am now legally married to Donald, and --
deportation.
Because I don't have a qualifying family member, even though I'm married to Donald.
Attorney Lady Salloway asked if you would write to Janet Pollock-Tyrone and ask her to stop the deportation because you're married and you have the individual.
I've been with him for eight years.
We've been together for eight years.
And they weren't deporting him, and I've seen people say, if he had a family member here, he gets paid.
Actually, Immigration told me that when they were, when they were about to adjust my visa, and they were like, no.
Well, first of all, let's, I really, no, it's okay. It's okay. First of all, I couldn't agree with you more. You know, and I have been, what I would describe as a fierce advocate on this issue. In fact, Immigration Equality, the organization, just had an event in Washington that I was featured, yes, at. So, I mean, you know, the fundraiser and the American, you know, so I completely get it and you'll want to be helpful.
Can I explain one thing?
Yes.
When you were describing the group, you were having difficulty expressing the term of the same-sex and the gay and all that. That's the problem that we're having in the community, even myself. When I go to people in the community, my brothers and sisters, my gay brothers and sisters, and I explain to them, I have to say, well, same-sex, bi-national, gay couple, blah, blah, blah. And they're like, what? What? But I'm going to get all that out. They're like, what? So one thing I propose to all of us is that same-sex.
Give me a term.
Instead of saying same-sex, first of all, in general, when it comes to the same-sex marriage, can we just take the sex word out of there? Because the regular crazy people, that's all they hear. They hear same-sex. Instead of saying same-sex, can we please say same-gender? It accomplishes the same goal.
How about legally marrying?
Exactly. And we, we are, this state and all the states that do not approve same-gender marriage, they're losing tons of money. You know who's making a fortune now? Boston, Massachusetts, Connecticut, all the states in the Northeast are making money off of us because we're going there to get married, and we're spending our money there, not here. This, then you say to yourself again, this is one of the biggest LGBT communities in the country. We should be, we should be the --
The Mecca.
The Mecca. We should be the beacon of what shouldn't happen in our country, and it's not happening here. And I'm sorry that I'm going on about this, but I am so passionate about this.
So am I.
If a man in this country, a heterosexual man in this country can order a bride on the internet, come to Russia, that's very hard to hear. That's very hard to hear. I love you. Dear little boy, get the nail when they have a new baby. Why do they care? Why do they care? That is the question. Why do they care? And I personally think that all these things we're talking about are distractions. It goes to what you're talking about, the economy and everything else. Big business is running the world, and they're the ones that are talking about the distractions so that we're not paying attention to who's really pulling this on.
And big businesses seem to be pretty short, darn short-sighted about the economic spoon that there would be if all of these restrictions went away.
Exactly.
I mean, it's so ridiculous. And I appreciate, I appreciate your fight. I understand what you're, what you're asking. I don't know if I can, I can help you. I can certainly try, and, but I will tell you that I'm not incorrect. Once President Obama asked the Justice Department to stop defending the donor, he did also say that they should slow down the, and halt, and I don't think it's a complete halt, of the deportations, deportation.
They have a dental, right?
I'm not saying that your individual situation has been addressed, but I, we'd be glad to look, if you call my office, and I have staff here, Mike Lickerman is here and so is Lori Flink, my deputy district director, but Betty Antyalgar is the person that handles immigration casework for me, and we'd be glad to take a look at your case specifically and see if there's a way for President Obama's current policy to apply to. I have to know the speaker and how to care.
I just wanted to remind everybody, when Debbie was a state senator, she showed up on, she showed up on Lotte Schall's door to knock down his door when he was going to sign our state donor bill. So she's been fighting this fight for a long time.
They know, they know that. Look, this is an opportunity for everyone to express their concerns. Yeah, I know, I know you know that I'm with you, and I'm your voice. So you need to, you need to share with me what your concerns are so that I can amplify my voice even more. Believe me, what you're saying and the raw emotion that exists in this room, it's why I'm here. I mean, I need to absorb your energy so that I can go back to Washington and, you know, and just push as hard as I can to make sure that we can make the progress that we expect and that you all deserve. Last question, Delia Black.
Hi, David Boltman. It's good to see you again.
Good to see you too.
It's about messaging. I understand that. And all of us in this room, we know the truth, we understand it, and we cannot comprehend why other people don't. Okay? And just curious why you think the Democrats, in the past history, have always had a hard time at messaging.
Messaging in general?
We lost the message, we lost the battle in the healthcare, the messaging. We definitely lost that battle when it came to the messaging.
I don't think you can completely blame it on messaging. I think messaging was an issue, but to say that it was just messaging maybe trivializes the election results too much. I think if you look at the struggles that the American people are going through and have been going through, with the unemployment rate as high as it is, with the economy struggling like it has been, even with the progress that we've been able to make, we've been able to make pretty massive progress from when President Obama took office, and the month before that, we were bleeding 750,000-plus jobs a month. And now you fast forward two and a half years later, the economy just last month added 230,000 private sector jobs, 1.8 billion private sector jobs, thirteen straight months of job growth. You know, the list of, the list of accomplishments goes on in terms of turning the economy around. We have a long way --
They still say we're failing, and that's the problem. The Republicans still say we're failing.
Well, yes, they're going to continue to say we're failing. But, so I think you had so many people who were in dire straits and have been in dire straits that, you know, against that backdrop, almost no matter what we said, unless that changed substantially for the majority of people struggling, they were going to the ballot box with mucklers on their ears. You know, so it doesn't matter what, look, we had the most significant accomplishments of any Congress in decades, but no matter, and we could have said it then, and we could have said it more clearly, and I think we could have not cut short the victory lap that we should have, that we should have done for longer after healthcare reform passed or Wall Street reform or, you know, saving the auto industry, which now, you know, all three auto companies are profitable for the first time since 2004, making sure the banking system didn't collapse. I mean, just the list of accomplishments, passing the Lily Ledbetter Equal Pay, Fair Pay Act so that equal pay, you know, is received for equal work. I mean, really, it's tremendously long list that we had a hard time breaking through, even though we were in the majority and even though we have the White House, because it's hard to get people to listen when they are really only caring about not losing their house, getting a job, and making sure that they can put food on the table.
Just to conclude my last comment, Nancy Pelosi, the last two years, she is probably one of the greatest House speakers we've ever had. The accomplishments she's done in the two years, second part of the two years she was a speaker, but yet nobody knows that.
I know.
She is villainized. Okay? So this is what I mean about messaging.
And I couldn't agree with you more that we need to make sure that we more effectively message that we, and, you know, I, you know, I'm a giving the ball kind of person, and, you know, the coach has put me in now, so.